Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the January meeting of the University Heights City Council. This is our new facility at 1302 Melrose. All of the councilors are here except Dottie who has a little medical problem and so she's going to be on the phone with us. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the December 13th council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Do I have a motion and a second?
Aye.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Here's the deal with the new center. You can take your microphone and you can put it right on top of your lips. And that's where we want it, right here.
Okay.
Okay, you didn't hear any of that? Okay. Okay. Well, we've approved the minutes. There we go. Just so you all know and council and people in the audience, we have a room system that that's what you're hearing right now. And if it's too loud, we can turn the room system down, but you still need to be right on top of your microphone because we're also feeding directly into our sound recording. So having your lips right in front of it, you can't be too loud because we have a noise gate that'll keep it from being too loud. So we can work through there. Okay? Yep, thanks Brock.
Okay. So I'm going to skip just a little bit. Lori has a medical problem at home with her husband. And so what I would like to do is skip ahead to the warrants and approve all the warrants. The only addition to the warrants, and I just got this this afternoon and I forwarded it to Lori, is $685 for the gentleman that installed all of these blinds. Here are these draperies for it. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay.
Lori's got another one that she needs to discuss.
We have a $250 filing fee. Something with a bond.
Jim can explain that.
Yeah, with Bankers Trust, we have a fee for them to be the payment agent. It turns out with our bonds of 950,000, excuse the zeros.
That's an order of magnitude.
Excuse the zeros, folks. Unlike our current bond, which we've just recently paid off, which was straight with Hill's Bank, this is with bondholders. And we, someone needs to track who the bondholders are and that they're getting their payments. So we make a payment to Bankers Trust every year, or every six months, they'll send us a bill. And then they record all of the payments. And we, there's a fee for that of about 500 a year and we need to pay 250 for the six months.
Okay. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes with the warrants with two additions? The $685 for the installation of the draperies and the $250 to Bankers Trust for the payment fee, I guess.
Move.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dottie, do you want to vote? Dottie, do you want to vote on the warrant?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay.
Did you hear me?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is public input. And I have two names on the list. The first is Greg Stiltner, who is going to tell us a little bit about some ideas he has for developing the Flom property.
Test. All right. Can you hear me? All good?
Mm-hmm.
First off, I would like to congratulate you guys on your new facility. I'm sure you're excited about that. And then I have some handouts here. I'll give you. Greg, since I've seen this, why don't you let me pass this around to the folks that are sitting out in the audience here?
Okay. Forgot, I guess I don't have one. Okay. First off, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Greg Stiltner. I moved to Iowa in about 1990 from the Appalachian Mountains, coal mining country in Virginia. I was recruited by Dan Gable. I wrestled here at Iowa, '90 through '95. He recruited me out of Virginia. I was a three-time state champ wrestler there. So he noticed my talent and got me here and I loved it here and never looked back. So I'm here and grew my roots here. I met my wife here and I got three small children. They're eight-year-old twin girls and my 11-year-old boy. So I'm making this my life. I opened up my business. I opened up a Stiltner Electric is the name of my business, Stiltner Electric. I've been doing that for about 12 years. And then recently, the last two, three years, I've been doing some developments and getting another avenue of my life going with the business. We've done that. So I'm going to start with you on that's a little bit about me. I'm going to be done with that. So then the project location or the idea that I want to talk about tonight is the Flom property. I think you guys are all familiar with that property. It's a 3.75 acre lot, just right by across from the old police station. My idea there, I currently own the property to the south of it. And I've been kind of talking to Mike Flom about it and about buying it from him and doing a project on it because I think it's a great location. So I, my idea there is to, at this point, I've thought about a lot of different things. I've discussed with, you know, some of the neighbors and ideas of anything I could think of. And what I could come up with mostly is a full-service hotel to put there. And I think that would be great for the community and for the location. The idea there is, you know, it seems like there's a lot of issues with entrances and egress. I know that traffic is a big deal. And so I'm trying to take everybody's concerns and put them all together and just try to do a good project for everybody and try to make sure that there's no problems because that's not who I am as a person. I don't like a lot of drama or problems. It's just, I just want to do a good project for everybody and for the community. So my past experiences is, right now, I'm currently building a Marriott Hotel in Corville. And I'm also doing a 54-acre development in the west side of Tiffin High School. So we got, the west side of Tiffin High School project is doing great. We've got a daycare, a vet clinic, a medical center. Those three buildings have been doing great. We're doing some multifamily and some single-family. It's turned out to be an amazing project for Tiffin, the Tiffin city, city of Tiffin. So I think my capabilities are par to what I want to do here. And the Marriott Hotel is right there, right beside the Corridge Mall. And I think we're just started on the fifth floor. It's going to be a Spring Hill Suites. I'm really excited about that. That's my biggest venture yet. The next thing I want to talk about is the neighborhood impact that this project will have. And, you know, I understand it's a very sensitive area for traffic. And I know it's, it's one of those things where I've watched a lot of these meetings and I know there's a lot of concerns about just congestion. And what I want to do is, I want to speak to the neighbors. I plan on doing whatever I can do to speak to the neighbors. And with everyone's in this room's input to help with that, and I'll take any suggestions to help them with their needs and the council's needs. And like I said, I completely understand the problematic parts of it. And my strategy, the next line down, is to work with the, you know, engineers, people that know a lot about this, a lot more than I do, and doing the traffic study, doing, you know, whatever I can do to make the congestion less. The other, next item down, I want to talk about the advantages, specifically tax advantages. I know the hotel motel tax is a big thing. And I know that, you know, approximately 775,000 could be potential for the city, but I don't know how much of that, I don't know the numbers, I don't know how much of that goes back to the city of University Heights. But I was hoping, you know, that would be an incentive for the city to be on board along with the actual tax assessment of the project. We're not asking for any TIF. We're not asking for a lot of help from the city, except for your approval and understanding that we want to do a good project with your help, not fighting anyone or trying to upset anybody in the community or the council. We just want everybody to be happy and do a nice project. Other advantages I put on my next list was, the one area that I was talking, to get in and out of it, there is a lot of people that cross one of the neighbors' properties there. And that whole area is kind of messed up as far as getting in and out of the street, the Melrose Street there that kind of goes down into that property. So currently Flom crosses a neighbor's property and a lot of the other neighbors crosses this one neighbor's property. So there's just a lot of congestion and a lot of things that need to be cleaned up there. So I think one of the advantages for the city is to get that all cleaned up and make sure that, you know, it looks a lot nicer and a lot better. Maybe a roundabout of some sort would be great. Any suggestions actually from anyone would be great. But like I said, I want to work with traffic engineers and people to try to get that done. The other advantage I have here is the full-service hotel. Hopefully with that or a detached restaurant in the same property, we would like to try to give some full-service dining, other areas of dining for the residents to go to, to walk to. It seems like the neighbors or the residents in the city of University Heights enjoy walking to the restaurant here. So I think another option would be great for them. Again, I don't, you know, I strive to be non-offensive to the neighbors. And I think with me, you're going to get someone who's not, I'm not driven by money or finance, I'm driven by life and enjoying doing good projects. So I think I want to do whatever the neighbors want and the council wants to get to do good projects. So the other thing, I kind of put this in here last minute, we, if you guys do approve this or it ends up happening, then we were going to donate a block of rooms to the Children's Hospital for, you know, families that need it. So at this time, I'd like to request or ask the zoning commission and mayor to set your community forum to present my full idea. And between now and then, I want to get a lot of renderings and ideas and feedback. But I want to present to the community and see if I can move forward with this project here in the city. So I do acknowledge that there's a lot of zoning that needs to be changed. I know there's, I think it's classified R1 right now or something of that nature. But I think I will try to abide by all the rules and the laws. And I know that Pat had given me some other zoning. He's outlined a bunch of the zoning changes and issues that I'm going to have to overcome. And I completely acknowledge that. And hopefully with everyone's help, we can do this together and it'd be a great project for the city of University Heights.
Greg, could you address the other properties that are Moyer and Kading and that sort of a thing, what you have in mind for that?
Say that a little bit louder.
I'm sorry. Can you address the other properties that are there? Moyer's property and Kading's property because I think that's kind of important, too.
Okay, yes. The entrance to this property is, it crosses Scott Kading's property. It, I would need to acquire Bruce Moyer's property as well. Would need to acquire at least a portion of Scott Kading's property or maybe all of it to do this project, to get, I think, the ingress and egress. But right now, there's a strip of ground that used to go to Melrose. It doesn't. So now everything crosses Nate Kading's property. So that was what I was talking about a little bit earlier. But I think it's a little bit of a congested area there that needs cleaned up as well. I think, like with your guys' input, I could, we could do whatever you want, really. We're wide open for it. I think if this project did happen, then it would be financially stable enough to handle literally probably anything you wanted. I know, you know, anything from a roundabout to a traffic light to just making it look beautiful over there, really, in my opinion.
Are you taking questions? Are you taking questions?
Yes, I'm taking questions now, sure.
When you say you are going to do this and you use the term "I," who's involved in this, if anybody, with you?
And I apologize for not mentioning that. I do have one partner. His name is Jim Glasgow. He's leaving, he's like my mentor. He's a great man. He's, I'm his apprentice. He's kind of letting me lead with this project, this one. He normally leads most of our projects, but he's letting me lead on this one. And he's kind of a guiding light behind the scenes a little bit and teaching me. So yeah, I have one partner.
And is he involved with a group or does he act as an individual?
It'll be, it'll be a group, not a group. It'll just be me and him, that's it. He's not involved with anyone, just me and him as an entity.
What's the name of your entity?
We haven't really formed the entity. We do have the purchase agreement under University Lake Partners II is who we have the purchase agreement upon contingencies with Mike Flom is who it's under right now. ULP II is kind of short.
How large a hotel do you foresee being there?
Say that again?
How large a hotel?
Okay. Yeah, we're thinking right now, we want to, I've looked at the ordinances. I know you guys have a 30, I think it's 35-foot cap. So we're thinking in the neighborhood of 140 rooms. We'd like to go larger.
How many stories is that?
Excuse me?
How many stories is 140 rooms?
Three, just three, yeah. I don't think, I don't think, I think that's the cap right now.
Do you have a hotel company interested?
Yes, we've already reached out to Marriott. They're more than happy to help us with this. They were excited when they were in town. We took them by the location. They were wide open arms and excited. So Marriott would be an easy flagship there. And I think Marriott's one of the largest in the country right now as far as flagships go.
What about egress and exit from the, or ingress from the south?
Oh, yeah. I did, the south side is where the property that we own. And we talked about all of the service vehicles, all the employees will exit and enter from the south. Egress from the south, I think for customers, I think it would be a kind of nuisance to egress from the south. But if that's something that has to happen, then to get the project done, then that's something we'd have to consider and do. But to minimize the traffic and to minimize the problematic traffic in that area, we would make sure that all employees and staff and deliveries and such would come in and out from the south.
That's all I with city property. Have you talked to them at all about any of that?
We have not. I, this is, I have not done that yet. I, that's something I need to put on the list to do, so.
The only thing I would say, Greg, looking with your list and what you want to do, I would, from experience, I wouldn't put a whole lot of money into renderings right now and putting things together. I think it's, you would be better off at a community meeting saying, what would you want it to look like?
Right.
And going that route first.
Okay.
That would be my one piece of advice is.
Yeah, that saves me money.
I've got a, I've got a big pile of alternate versions of this very space.
Oh, okay. I mean, you know, I tried to come up with different scenarios, just, you know, family housing and workforce housing. And it's just for the amount of money that we would need to spend to acquire the properties around it and acquire that property, I mean, you know, with the parking that Mr. Flom has there, the property cash flow's really good for him. And to buy it, he would want a lot of money for it because of how much it cash flows currently.
I think it's, it would be a great service to the hospital to have a hotel there, certainly. And I'm sure that's part of the rationale to have it there.
Yeah.
And the balance is what does it do to our community? And that's what I think the community forum should focus on and will focus on. But thanks for coming by and sharing this with us.
Absolutely. And that was one of our focuses, you know. And I just want to mention, you know, that if we wanted to kind of have a lot of trees to kind of hide it in certain way, we're fine with that, too, because we feel like if the hospital knows it's there and they will use it. And so I don't think, I think the impact would be great, but.
What about parking on football games?
Yeah. And I just, that is, I'm glad you brought that up, Jim. I want to drive home to this council and to this community. We are not driven by football parking. It's not what we are, it's not who Jim and I is. I don't think Jim's been to a game in 10 years. And I went to one tailgater this year, it was the Nebraska game, and that was it. So I, we're not driven by football parking. It's not who we are or what we are. We're business people that like to do good projects, so.
So Greg, can you clarify? Does that mean that you are saying that you would maintain ownership of this property after it's built?
Absolutely. Love to. I'm young and no interest in selling it at all, no. And then, you know, we would actually, if the city would say, we want you to sign to get the project going, if you want, you know, you want to put an ordinance on this particular property that we can't have football parking, I mean, we're fine with that, too, because it's not what we're about, it's not who we're about. It's just, it's, it's easy to make that decision, so.
Greg, in the past, we've had a number of other developers come by. The most recent one was a CCG Group, Land Development Group from Chicago. The next steps that council advised that particular group to undertake is, one, to essentially send out a mailing to all residents of University Heights. I think you can work through the Johnson County Property Records Office to obtain a listing of all residents. Mail out a flyer. You're on your own with respect to setting up a date that would work. You may want to informally check with council to make sure that counselors might be available and the mayor as well. But generally, most of these forums have taken place up next door at the Athletic Club. So you may want to reach out to them and reserve a conference area for you to have an audience and invite the public of University Heights.
You bet, absolutely.
I think we're being asked to do something different now. He's asking for a forum. I mean, your request is.
I'm wide open to, I'm literally wide open to what you guys decide and how to move forward. This is all new to me. So I, if, I spoke to Wally this morning and he was, his idea was to create a forum and a good neighbor meeting, I think, what it'd be called. I have a couple brochures in my email right now that I, it gives me some direction on good neighbor meetings. So I think that's what I've been hearing, the term thrown around. So yeah, I'd love to have a good neighbor meeting.
How about a bad neighbor meeting?
Well, in my view, we're getting 60 chairs here coming. I think that's why we have the community center. We should be able to have it here. And if we think it's going to be too many people coming, then we'll just have two of them. We'll just split it.
Sure. But I'll take your lead and.
So I'm sensing the council is in favor of doing this community, doing this community forum. And so I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and we'll work on this and we'll get it set up. I'll maybe coordinate it with Pat a little bit since he's the zoning chair. Pat, do you have any comments?
I would echo what Council Casada has indicated, that in the past, this has not been a process that has been overseen by the city. It is a process that the city has encouraged proponents of redevelopment to take before they initiate the formal process of applying to the zoning commission for a zoning change. So I think Jerry has picked up, that's right, he's asking for something different. I think that there's something to be said for the way we've done this in the past. I don't know what that means in terms of location, whether the city standoff should extend to the facility or whether the facility should be available. I don't know if you finalized that policy yet.
No.
But if not, then next door. Because I think that clean break between the developer talking to people gives them a latitude to take into account the feedback they receive and adjust accordingly before they put the time and effort into having Steve take a look at the kind of zoning ordinance change that would be necessary to accommodate the kind of policy. I also wanted to reiterate, I think, the importance of what Council Casada said, that in the past on these projects, be it Grandview or OUP or GG Land, we have sent notice to everyone in town. There are other places where notice only goes out to the people within two or three There are other places where notice only goes out to the people within two or three hundred feet. I think we're a small community, uh, I think in terms of minimizing a blowback about something happening, it's just much better to give everybody in town notice, uh, of the event, um, so that everyone can, feels that they were aware of what was being discussed and had an opportunity to participate.
Pat, what, what is the-
I suppose that the, the last point I would make is, is that there obviously, uh, hotel development there has, you know, some dimensions, but, uh, you aren't gonna have hotel guests come through the south entrance. That would probably, and access on Melrose is, is unavoidable with this kind of development. On the other hand, if it was townhouses, a cul-de-sac, or it's entirely possible, we could have a reverse lithium condominiums with the property being in University Heights with access being through, um, the Melrose Lake, uh, area. But that, I've gotten lost back there a couple of times myself, um, and that wouldn't be perhaps overly challenging for homeowners, but I think it would be, uh, just unrealistic if you were talking about a, a development that has public, um, customers of this sort.
My only reason for suggesting that we have the meeting or help to organize is that we get information as quickly as we can about what the residents feel about this.
That's the most important thing to me.
Are you not planning on attending if it were held by the developer alone?
I think, the, the, the Mayor Flom and I, um, from, Louise and I talked about this, uh, previously and, and the sense of the Good Neighbor Meetings, as I understand it, and I always say incredible, is, is for that stuff to come up, not in front of the physician makers, but just in a, a, an open forum, that thereafter, uh, when it's brought to, um, the zoning commission and thereafter the council, then there would be yet further opportunity-
Sure.
-for citizens to have input on a formidable proposal, whereas there's a little bit more of kind of a brainstorming quality to the Good Neighbor Meeting, as I understand it.
I mean, my, my initial reaction to this is, um, not, not be affirmative, but I sure like to know as quick as possible what the residents want, and, uh-
And I, I think my sense is that that's what happened with G.G. Land.
Okay.
That there was a Good Neighbor Meeting, and at the next meeting, uh, Steve reported, these, this is information that I've shared with Greg, Steve reported that there'd been no further contact from the developers and, and three members of the council weighed in with, based on what we heard, uh, at the public meeting, uh, we wouldn't be in favor of a project of this sort. And so it, it never came on for any sort of formal consideration, uh, by the zoning commission, which was council.
And, well, I'm not sure that's the best outcome, but it's an outcome, and it's, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. Thank you.
I do have one quick question, um, the, I hear some numbers, uh, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred feet, I don't know what the, to, I don't know how far to go out to get immediate neighbor, um, opinions.
I, I would just, as someone said, I, as Pat was saying, I think you should just include the whole town.
Just, uh, sure, sounds great.
Yeah, you, you can work with the county auditor's office-
Yep.
And they can pull a list of all residents within University Heights. It comes from the auditor's office, is that not correct, Steve? Okay, and it's more accurate to go straight to the auditor who has all of the new owners or the new property owners? And the assessor, thank you, the assessor's office.
You bet, absolutely, I'll, so send out a flyer to them on the, once we, once you guys kinda let me know what the date, what are we, whatever we decide to do, and then they'll send out a flyer for that, and I can do that, so.
Okay. I, uh, let's go back though to the location. Yeah, let's go back to this location. I'm, I'm a little concerned about doing it here, uh, showing our endorsement of any way by the council. And secondly, we don't really have procedures set up on anyone using this at this point. I think that's gonna take a couple of months.
That's right.
And so, um, I, I think you're better to-
To your athletic club, yeah, absolutely.
Quite frankly, I think it'd be, get done more expeditiously and-
Yeah, I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to them and, as well.
I can give you the, I can give you the contact person.
You bet, yeah.
The other thing I'd like to express concern or reservation about is any expenses that the city would be incurring as a result of assisting this particular applicant. In the past, we have historically not provided any legal support, so I, I, Jim, you correct me if we've paid out any bills to support the G.G. Land Group or any other groups that have come before council with expenses from our staff to help them do a Good Neighbor Meeting of this type.
No, that, that's correct, and I, Pat normally instructs the developer, whoever they are, and I think you've normally done it, or zoning has been very clear with these individuals, what we do, and we put, and we put together a letter and go over that kind of information with Steve and the others. So, yeah, we do not, you're right, we do not support, and you need to understand everything that we charge you.
Oh, absolutely, no problems. Like I say, I think it's such a great project, I think, um, from having a university hospital right there and with all the people coming in and out of town to that facility, I think, I think the project will, um, sustain a lot of different, um, avenues or hurdles we would need to come, overcome financially, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm confident of that.
So, Jim, are, do you feel comfort, I, I mean, yeah, Jim, do you feel comfortable that we have provided you some guidance on your next steps?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Greg.
No problem.
Virginia?
Thank you. Pull this way down, good? I'm Virginia Miller, I'm the chairperson of the Tree Board, I'm here also of Seven Glencrest Drive, here to give you a summary of what we did in 2016 and a summary of what we're looking at for 2017 on the Tree Board. Um, 2016 was a big year for planting in University Heights. We raised twenty-four hundred dollars and we purchased twenty-two trees. Um, the reason this number was so high is because a rogue buck damaged five trees in the fall of 2015. And so we wanted to be able to replant those and then still achieve our planting goals for the year without having to, uh, take away from that number.
We need to put the bow hunting season back into play, you think, Virginia?
I had asked you all to do that back in the spring, I don't know what happened with that. Um, I also personally invested in some trunk protectors, I don't think we're gonna have this problem again. Um, everything looks like it's growing really well, overall, our survival rate's extremely high. We're pretty close to a ninety percent survival, or above ninety percent survival rate. At most, we've had to replace maybe two trees per year that didn't survive from previous years, and it's usually due to a lack of watering by the homeowner. Um, in October, I again applied for the Mid-American Energy Trees Please Grant, and I just got the letter last week that we received this one thousand dollar grant again this year. Um, the Tree Board and I will now work on securing matching funds. Um, this year and going forward, I think we'll probably scale back our quantity goals a little bit and probably spend a little more money per tree in order to get slightly bigger trees and slightly more rare species. Um, and as usual, we're starting out the year with a few requests for trees already in hand. I'm, I'm thinking we'll plant maybe ten to twelve trees this year, and I've already got requests for probably seven to nine. Couple of them were, you know, sort of mentioned in passing, so they're not confirmed at this point. So if you wanna get on the list, please contact me soon, 'cause it is filling up. Emerald ash borer continues to be a concern, we've got eighteen trees left on city property that are ash trees. Uh, some of them are still very healthy and look great, some of them are already in poor condition just from natural tree decline, you know, having nothing to do with Emerald Ash Borer.
How many, how many of those ash are in Grandview, at Grandview?
None of the Grandview trees are on city property, so those would be all on private property.
Oh, you're talking about city?
City property, eighteen trees. On private property in University Heights, there are many, many, many more, especially over in the, is it called Melrose Park area? Where the newer part of town, that was a big, a lot of people chose ash trees back in the sixties and seventies when those houses were being built. So, private property is gonna have a lot more ash trees and we're gonna see a lot of tree death. On city property, we're not doing too bad. Um, we should continue to re, remove poor quality ash trees as, as we go through the years here, so we can spread the work out over as many years as possible. Um, last summer, the Tree Board delivered letters to each property with an ash on their public right-of-way, so that the homeowners should be aware of the cost of removal that they'll have coming up. This brings me to my final point, so we've essentially established one half of an urban forestry management plan in recent years, which is planting, but we are lacking the other half of a proper urban forestry management plan, which is hazard mitigation. The Tree Board would like to establish a hazard mitigation plan beginning this year. Currently, the city doesn't do any evaluations of tree condition, and we don't do a lot of proactive tree removals for trees that are dangerous or dying. Uh, we consider public trees to be owned by the adjacent property owner, and we expect the property owner to take care of all trimming and maintenance, and the city steps in to pay half on removals. This is a really common practice among small cities, but it's a practice that might not be legally defensible. The city can't just shrug its responsibility for city trees by assigning them to the adjacent homeowner. A more defensible position for the city to take would be to periodically evaluate our street trees for their condition, create a list of trees that need to be removed or trimmed, listed by priority, and then schedule the work as the budget allows. It's not expected that the city should be able to remove or address all hazards immediately. Uh, it's generally recognized by the courts that the city can only do what its budget allows it to do. So if, you know, we have fifteen trees that need to be removed, but we can only budget for two per year, and a tree farther down on the list falls on a house before we can get to it, generally, the city is in a defensible position because we've been doing the best we can with the resources we have. I've been working on a graduate program in urban forestry over the past year, and I've completed a few tree risk assessments as a part of my coursework, but I don't have enough experience in these yet to feel comfortable doing this kinda work on my own. So I've talked to Mark Vitash and Emma Hannigan from the DNR, um, that's our district forester and the state forester, to see if they could engage with University Heights to, for the three of us to complete this survey together, with Emma training Mark and I in how to do it independently in the future.
I can't hear anything, is someone talking?
Oh, no. Tree Board. Can anyone else hear me?
Do you have this all, do you have this all written up?
Yeah, I'll send the report, sure. So I spoke with, um, Mark and Emma last week, and they agreed that this would be, that, that doing a survey together this summer with, you know, training, Mark and I would be a good way to accomplish the dual goes, goals of establishing an actionable hazard survey and then also giving the city a way out to accomplish this work independently in the future. And this also can be done at zero cost to the city. Um, Mark and Emma can schedule this to be done in June of 2017, provided that the council has no objections. Any questions?
What's the cost of the service from the state?
Zero.
Has a decision been made, um, about the ash borer and whether we're gonna treat it on city trees or not?
We are not treating any city trees. Homeowners may treat the trees if they, independently at their own cost if they wish. And unlike Iowa City, we won't remove those trees if they're being treated. In Iowa City, if you treat your own, your own city tree, they'll still remove it. We just don't, we don't, it's not a big enough part of our tree canopy, it's only about eight percent of our trees on city property, so it's, uh, we're, we're not in bad shape, a lot of cities are looking at using, losing forty percent of their street trees. We're pretty okay.
How many, how many ashes on Olive Court in the public, in the city right-of-way?
Off the top of my head, I think three.
Okay.
Should we just throw streets at you, Virginia, and just have it?
I know, I'm ready.
Olive Court is one where, where I think we might be doing some construction in the next couple of years. We have to look at that, yeah.
They're gonna come down anyway.
A lot, a, a lot of those are, are bad, I mean, the ashes are gonna have to come out, and then there's a lot of silver maples that are past their prime that are gonna need to come out there too.
So where do, where do we need to go as a city then? I mean, I think, I think obviously-
You need not object to-
Yeah, I mean, I guess this is more, more of a question to-
Me taking on hazard mitigation.
Yeah, I mean, a question more to the mayor and to the attorney, I mean, do we need just a sense of the council now or do we need to schedule this for a future meeting to vote on it?
I think something in writing would be helpful.
I, I mean, if, if, if we can make a motion now, I would move that the city goes on record as supporting the state and our Tree Board Chair surveying our trees this summer.
No cost to the city.
At no cost to the city.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make that as a motion. They were gonna, what we talked about, Dottie, was by identifying hazard, just in the city right-of-way trees, doing an assessment for hazard, just to know that we, we don't have problems with any of our city trees. Well, that's, yeah, Virginia said she'd send all this, this proposal and, and how she'll structure it with the state forester to you, 'cause she's got it all in writing. So, but I, I think just if, just having a city tree survey that assesses condition, that can't hurt us.
We do have to take action, you know, we will have to then be taking action on the trees that are problematic.
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Dottie, we're voting on this, uh, proposal to have the trees surveyed by Virginia and folks from the state.
For risk mitigation purposes.
Are you there?
I'm here, are you chatting with me?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're voting now, we need your-
Okay, so what is, what is, what is the decision?
The, uh, motion is to, uh, have Virginia work with, uh, two folks from the state and do a survey of the trees on the city property.
Yeah, I think I'd like to also have a vote with, with me, because I'm working with Hannah on the visionary thing, so I'd like her to coordinate with me.
Is she voting? Is it yes or no?
But we need a vote yes or no on this petition.
Well, that's my condition on the motion.
So she's making an amendment?
Wait a minute, what, let's hear, wait a minute, okay.
I'd be happy to go, like, if Dottie wants to accompany the survey, that's fine, I will of course go over the results of the survey, but this doesn't have anything to do with Hannah Howard from Trees Forever or community visioning.
Did you hear that?
No.
Well, she's happy to coordinate it with you and Hannah, although she doesn't think it has an, what they're gonna be looking at won't have an impact on what you're talking, on what you and Hannah are looking at.
But it said at night, so I want that to be part of the motion that she will coordinate with me.
It's not part of the motion, vote yes or no, or abstain.
Well, she's offering an amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'm amending it.
Okay, so, all right, so we have a motion, two amendments, and a second, okay?
Is there a second?
All I have is a first.
Dottie, Dottie makes, Dottie makes the first and, and someone will make the second.
You know, as a courtesy, there you go, as courtesy. Dottie, can you speak to your amendment?
I can hardly hear anybody tonight, it's, it's like a bunch of crickets. I will vote for it if she coordinates with me.
Yeah, she said she would, she said she would, Dottie.
Okay, so do we, Mr. Mayor, I think you have full discussion?
We have Dottie as the first, Sylvia's the second to amend to, as was all discussed ad nauseam, so can we vote on that one?
Sure.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we still need to vote on the first with the amendment now.
Let's please vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, so it's approved with the amendment.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda, Jeff Maxwell is not here to give OUP updates, construction updates. So my mayor's report is basically an update on what, what we've, what we've been doing.
Wally? I was going to say something on the OUP report if, but I, I could wait till afterwards.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I, I just wanted to report to council that Carolyn and I have purchased a space in OUP, and, um, we were the second one to purchase, you were the first, the city council was. You were second?
First commercial.
Of the commercial, yeah, yeah, of the commercial space. Oh, the commercial, yeah, yeah, the commercial space. So we have purchased that, and I'd be pleased to answer most questions, and Carolyn and I own the property. Maggie's Farm Wood Fire Pizza will inhabit it, so we're pleased to be here.
So the million-dollar question that everybody would want to know, Jerry, is when are you thinking of opening?
May 1st.
May 1st? Wow, okay.
And, and where is it? Is it right next door to us?
It's the middle... The middle one with a patio.
Okay.
And we'll be using the patio.
Okay.
Patio in the front or back?
It's on the Melrose side.
Melrose side, okay, thank you.
Okay, so I spent about $1,480 of the $2,000...
Wally, why don't you get a little, if you pull your mic down just a little bit, there
Okay. So I spent about $1,480 of the $2,000 I was allotted. That includes the appliances. We're getting a new, we're getting a refrigerator and a microwave toward the end of the month. Jerry recommended two young guys to come and help us, and they were wonderful, and we paid them $90 each to help us move. I gave Paul Moore $90, a check for $90, to pay for the carpet cleaning, which was required of our, of our lease, and he, we, we decided on about $500 for wall repairs for everything that had to be done, and he'll send us a bill for that. He's also going to clean our, our generator and put that in the garage. It needs the oil taken, the gas taken out of it. Furniture delivery, the desks are supposed to be here tomorrow, the chairs are supposed to be shipped January 20th, and the police lockers sometime in February. We're still awaiting all the keys for the OUP closet and police interior areas, as well as figuring out the postal delivery. We're going to be getting FOB cards. I've got FOB cards now, but they're the construction FOB cards, and we're supposed to be getting the new ones here very shortly. So if any of the council or any of the staff wants one of the, the ones that I have, I'll be happy to, to issue those. Otherwise, we can wait until, you know, wait until the new ones come, which I don't think is going to be too long. We bought a, or I bought a cabinet that's out in the front, and the idea is we're going to put the old minutes in there and kind of display them as kind of a historical thing. The cabinet looks kind of rustic, if you look at it, so we're going to try to get the, try to get the minutes in there and just, you know, label what they are and so forth. Access to the police area is, is limited by the law, and so the FOB cards that everybody has, with the exception of Chris and I, will not be good to get into the, into the police area. They will be good just to get into here. Chris had, Chris and I had to be fingerprinted and information sent to the state and so forth in order to do that. We'll get the, the city treasurer and clerk's office is back there in the same area where the electronics are, and we'll get that set up. We're going to move Ken's desk in there after the new desks come. We've taken items to Goodwill and restored the things that we just don't need. There are some filing cabinets and a storage cabinet in the, in the garage that we're probably just going to dispose of, because I don't think we're going to need them, so you might pass the word if any residents want to, you know, buy them for five or 10 bucks and come and haul them away, we would appreciate that.
We can, we can have our own space at the city garage sale in June, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're still having problems with CenturyLink on the phone line, but I think that's theoretically, theoretically, that's about resolved. The internet is all, is all set up. We also have all these old signs that we, the street signs, that might have the idea of selling to the residents, and we can do that according to what I found out. So if anybody wants to buy, you know, any of the, any of the street signs to put in their garage as a souvenir of University Heights, why, please let me know. I'm hoping to do a work session here in the next one to two weeks, so we can talk about some of the, some of the logistics running this place. And we're going to put, we want to put some shelves up in this, in these closets, but we need to wait to see how much space the chairs and the tables are going to take up before we do that. Russ is going to put up a shelf in the, in the janitor's closet, which is right there, and probably one in the police storage area also. The mail problem, we've been going back and forth. First, we were supposed to have something over there, then we weren't, now we're supposed to have it over there, so we're in the process of getting that worked out. Ken gave me all those old medications that were in that box out there, and it was kind of a big mess, and there was also needles in there, so I'm going to, I'm going to spend some money for some Sharps containers and put them in the, in the...
What was that, what were you talking about?
He's going to get a Sharps container.
I'm going to get Sharps containers for the bathroom, I think, so, okay? Other than that, it's been a lot of work. We've been, we've been working hard trying to get everything done, and, you know, little by little, I think we'll get it done. I hope by February that, that things are, are looking better, so, okay?
I want to thank you for your leadership in this thing and the hard work.
You bet. Great job.
Getting this moved over so quickly, and it's nice to have a council meeting here, and also not having such large appreciation, sorry, preparation and teardown for video work. I'm sure Mike and John, who's not here, and Brad back there, we all appreciate that. Thank you for your work there.
I told Wally it was the first time I've walked to a meeting since 2010.
By what time, too?
I, yeah, I walked here at quarter to six. It was pretty sweet. I do want to echo that, though. Wally has certainly put a lot of work into making this success, a very successful transition.
And also a very safe transition, Wally. No injuries, thank goodness.
Well, almost one time, so.
Of course, we got that on a disclaimer, right?
Same place over on that high curve in front of the city hall, where my wife fell and broke her shoulder here about three years ago, so, anyway. And the police are pretty well set up. I mean, they've got, they've got their internet. The main thing is that, is that phone line, the police, the police are looking good. And I should give Chris, Chris and some of the other officers credit for that, because they, you know, they jumped in right away and started hooking up wires and all that stuff, something I know absolutely nothing about. I told them I know about as much about that as I do running the nuclear power plant at Okay, so the next, the next is Resolution 1701, ratifying my appointments to the zoning commission, board of adjustment, and the Tree Board. Virginia said the Tree Board is basically intact from, from, from what it has been. We already approved Doris Ekhai for the board of adjustment, and Alice Haugen has agreed to remain on the zoning for, you know, at least for the foreseeable future, so...
Motion to adopt your resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can you approve the discussion?
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Kishada?
Aye.
Dottie, we're voting on ratifying the appointments.
I heard it, aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Aberkamp?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay, okay, zoning commission report, Pat.
The zoning commission met here a week ago and considered, okay, considered, did a first-pass review of four ordinances that Steve's office had drafted. There might be a fifth one on sensitive areas that we may be within striking distance of finishing up, and the process that the zoning commission, I think, favored would be when we do have our packet of ordinances together, to our satisfaction, that we propose having a joint work session with council to walk through those ordinances and to field questions about why we've come up with these proposals. We anticipate that that work session would be preceded by notice to everyone in town about a packet of proposals that would be available on the website. This would be kind of separate and apart from the public hearing that the council would have to have thereafter, as these ordinances came forward for a first reading. So that could be mid, February, it could be mid-March, although the spring break gets in there, maybe it'll be mid-April. This is, as I've said before, these proposals are, are important, they're, they're not urgent, and we don't want them to be postponed indefinitely, but as soon as we have finished our workup, we'll be getting in touch with you and asking to schedule a joint work session with council. And so I just wanted kind of a general heads up, but also, you know, any concerns people might have about proceeding in that fashion. Wally and Mike were there, and I think you heard that discussion, and...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Steve, legal report?
I don't have much to add to my written report, except that I do have a supply of the conflict of interest forms, if anyone needs one to sign. Dottie has indicated to me that she has signed hers, because she's not here, she has it with her, but she'll, she'll get it to Chris in the next day or so, and other than that, I don't have anything to add to my report unless there are questions.
Well, Steve, I, I want to make sure we appreciate the effort and work you did in addressing the complaint filed with the State Open Meetings Group. You were certainly helpful in leading the council's action and eventually getting the complaint dismissed, so I want to thank you for your also continued work in getting this public records policy finalized, so thank you very much.
Steve, can you, I, can you provide a summary of, of comments that have been made and submitted to you with respect to the public policy record? I don't know what those changes might be, and I'm interested in, in having a general idea of what recommendations have been made to you.
The only ones that, I think, before I say this, the principal ones, and I think the only ones, are the, are the written submissions from Pat Bauer and then his oral comments, which I think were generally reflective of those written comments from the December I don't think there was really been any others.
Okay, and one, so comment period is still open for, okay?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the council can revise its policy at any time, so...
Right, but you are drafting at this point, right? So that means you're busy integrating those comments into the document, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, and so if, yeah, absolutely, if anyone has comments, council, public, anybody, I mean, I'll certainly, I'll certainly accept anything and, and report to the council what comments were made, and I guess if, you know, if there's conflicting comments or comments I'm not sure the council wants, the council will have to make those decisions, but I'll, I'll certainly inform you.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, city clerk report?
I, excuse me, I sent out my clerk report and the updated building and rental permit spreadsheets. Stan and I have been in conversation on a couple of properties that have not responded to the letters I sent out over a month ago, and so he and I are working on those. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's it for me.
What was the nature of the letters you sent out a month ago?
They were to Grandview Properties for rental permits. Stan and I have been working on a list of outstanding permits. They received a letter. Most have been responsive and contacting us, letting us know if they are owned by the property owners and, and used by the property owners, or if they're rentals.
Thank you.
Finance, Jim?
Yeah, two items. One, the current budget, fiscal '16, '17, current issues, I just want to update the council. While the report at this point shows a surplus at mid-year, there still needs to be some more work done to understand what that looks like more easily read and ensure that it's more accurate. To do that, Steve Ballard and Josiah and I will be working on getting the bonding and expenses for the intersection and roadwork for OUP properly allocated in the, in the next couple of weeks. From that, Steve and Lori and I will be working to prepare the reimbursement requirements for OUP developers, what they need to pay above that. And then finally, Steve Kuhl and Lori and I will be determining how we're going to change the reporting format to more accurately reflect where the expenses should be allocated. This bonding and $950,000, how do we allocate that? By that time, also, we ought to have in most of the bills for the furniture and other expenses at the community center. So as I've been saying from the beginning, we need to look at fiscal years '16 and '17 together, that these budgets, because we had, you know, $89,000 surplus last year, and most of that was due to the fact that we had extra building, extra revenue from building permits, over $100,000 for OUP, and some of those expenses are being incurred this year. So anyway, that's, that's the work that'll be going on, and I'll update the council again next, next month on the '16, '17 budget. Any questions?
So you want us, do you, do you want to send us something beforehand in terms of thinking about the budget process for FY '17, or '18, whatever it is?
I'll get to that next.
Oh, thought you were wrapping up.
There's two items.
Okay.
It's an all-time high for me.
There was a long pause there.
I just want to cover this year's budget, see if there's any other questions. So anyway, I'll keep you informed and let you know, but, you know, this was, this bonding thing is just different, like, all of a sudden, we have to have a payment agent because of, for this bond of $950,000, because those bondholders were before, current bond, all the payment agent was Hill's Bank, because that's who gave us the money, but in this particular case, it's going to be different, and it's, those bonds were sold. I did talk to Maggie Berger this week, and she said current rates are probably around two and a quarter right now, so that's at least 50 basis points we picked up by going in August, when we got 1.77, so we definitely hit, and as I tracked the bond market, we hit a, we're, I don't know if we got the low, but we're damn close, so we ought to feel pretty good about that.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah. Now, Mike, we'll go to '17, '18. We'll be, next meeting, we're going to be reviewing the preliminary budget with Steve Kuhl. So far, I've got library charges and animal center. Josiah and I gave me some stuff on some of the basic things like sanding and street sweeping, those types of things. I would say to, to Jerry and Dottie, this year, we changed with seats and paid it on a per-use each basis, so I don't feel a need for you to go back to seats and ask how we're going to do it. We'll just continue to do it the same way this year. We budgeted $8,000, we haven't even spent $1,000 yet, and I don't think we're going to, going to get there, so it's much cheaper, we just don't have that much of a usage. It's much cheaper to do it on a per-use each basis. So as each of you get your information, you can send to me, and I will, I will forward on to Steve Kuhl. I'm encouraging all of you to get it to me by February 1st, so Steve can put together preliminary budget for our February 14th meeting.
That's like spending Valentine's Day, talking about the budget.
Well, yeah. So next month, also, we had agreed that we'd be looking at wages for, we always look at wages for police, but we'll need to be looking at building, you know, agreed to do building inspector, housing inspector, clerk, treasurer, and Russ Boyer. I do not look, I do not plan to make, to look at any of the changes around mayor or council person until after this budget season, and it's no point, and we don't need that until later in the year, if we decide to do anything.
Jim?
Yes.
Jim, Jerry and I will work with the police to come up with a budget for you to look at.
Correct, yes, yeah. Each of you have your, I mean, each of them have the assignments, which I've sent out earlier, so, and I, I will plan to update every week what I've got in and what I need, what I have left out, so I'll email you each week. These are the ones I have in, and this is what I'm looking for.
Okay, good.
Now, next, and there's, our March meeting is on the 14th, and the budget is due on the 15th to the state. We don't have a lot of wiggle room, so we're going to try to get as much done, I want to try to get as much done at the next meeting, February 14th, so that, the cleanup items will be pretty easy for Steve and I, Steve Kuhl and I to work with Lori and get these done, and also to avoid a special meeting. I mean, I'm looking at the special meeting, we have passed zoning, we've got, we've still got a football forum, we've got community center policies on how we're going to do that, I mean, there's a lot on our plate, and so hopefully, we can get all that done at the next meeting, so we'll be working to drive that particular one. Any other questions? Answer your stuff.
No, that's, that's what I wanted to know, so I could start...
No, that's what I wanted to know, so I could start finding out what I needed to find expenses for.
Jim, with respect to the anticipated wage increases for building, housing, clerk, and the city facilities, I wanted to ask a question. Do you have research that you can send that? I know that that was a question that was raised to me, so I just wanted to know if there was rate increase research that should be shared with council for consideration ahead of the meeting, especially if you want to wrap this up by February.
Yeah, I, well, I, we agreed to do, look at clerk and treasurer. I'm not anticipating raising though, quite frankly, even though they're here and they can hear me, but I just reviewed it last, we just did it last year, but Jerry had suggested that we do this every year and we take a look at it. And any data I have, I'll get out ahead of time. I'll go through the process and check like I did last time on those particular ones.
Since this...
It's difficult with rental and housing because some of these contract with, they don't have, they contract with the county or something like that, so we're going to have to see how we can handle that.
Good.
Yeah, and I'd like to see too, how much we're spending on part-time and call-in employees, so that we have a full picture of our expenditures.
The only part-time employee I know is Russ Boyer, which I listed on the... Fine, yeah, I, yeah, I've got that listed down, and I can't remember who's responsible for that, maybe Josiah or maybe, maybe you, Dottie.
I will have one final request to make if we're going to be evaluating, it's going to be part A and part B. Part A, can we please have job descriptions for these, these job descriptions for the, for the employee posts that we are considering raises? And number two, can we create a public file of these documents so they can be publicly reviewed on the city's webpage?
Well, I will have to take a look at that. I don't know if we can get that, all that done by February 14th, so that's my point.
No, but getting the job descriptions, we should already have something on record, correct? Everybody's operating under an engagement of some description, right, for job scope?
Well, I think...
And number two, the posting should be relatively easy, right, Mike, from e-government? Yeah?
I'll have to work to see. I've been on the council for six years and haven't seen any job descriptions, so, but I'm happy to research that.
I would be happy to receive it. But, thank you.
Are you finished, Jim?
I'm done.
Okay. So, Lori, we already did your warrants, because I thought you wanted to leave. Anything else to tell us?
No.
Okay. Okay. Chris, police report, Chris Lyon?
I don't have much to add to the report I sent out already. Just to add that we're excited about the new department setting that up, waiting on furniture.
Okay. Jerry?
Yeah. I don't know that we have to discuss any of these in depth, been chastised for suggesting that some of them even be brought up at a council meeting, but I think at the time that we're about to hire a new chief, it would be useful, if other council members think so, to have a discussion of specific missions, job descriptions, and budgets. It's a huge chunk of the city budget. It's probably the most asked question I get from residents.
The most what?
The most asked question I get from residents. And I'm new to this, and I'd just like to see what the other council members think. And it might be useful, given that we need a job description for the new chief, and we need those papers, Mike, that you said we could get from the last hiring, to start that search. And just need some guidance on how that search gets started, what we need to do, and what your experiences have been getting this going. Sorry for my voice, I've had this cold. No, just, the only other, the only other issue is, I was expecting some residents here to talk about the Horn School episode, and I just wanted to be prepared to acknowledge to the residents, and I will do so now, that the council will meet in committee, or the committee members will meet about, about the questions that have been asked about that.
No, I just, one of, I think we have a candidate in place who understands the nature of the University Heights and the citizens, and is very community-focused. I don't like to spend a lot of time rewriting the rules. I think we need to look at police function. This is a small village, it is not a mega, mega, megamopolis. Policing here is a little different and unique. I also think that maybe professionals know a little better about what they need to do than white people. So, that's my concern, that this not become a decision beyond the scope that's needed.
What decision are you talking about?
The decision to bring this to the community for their input on what we need in policing. I think we can talk about this in the, in the police committee. We can decide how we want to proceed, and then we can take that result of that to the council, to see if they agree with us. And I think the police committee, myself and Jerry, and the police, Chris or Ken, if he's still here, are the persons that should look at the policy and procedure and decide if the job criteria that we have fit the expectation from the job.
Any other comments?
I did send, after the, after last month's meeting, I did send the stuff from the previous search to everybody on council. If you didn't get that, let me know, and I'll send it again.
I don't think I did, because I looked for it.
Okay, yeah. No, I just, I made sure...
I do make mistakes, though, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, and it may have, it may have not been through, but I'll send it again, Jerry.
And Mike, I wanted to say thank you very much, because as I reviewed the documents you sent over, it became amply clear that we've had a progressive method of how we engage a search for a police chief. And the last, correct me if I'm wrong, since you're most familiar, you were on that committee. When the hiring committee went out to hire the candidates, or hired the candidate, they, we involved the mayor, two members of the community protection, and then we had a volunteer police officer from the area, and we also had legal. And I see that as a progression of having more stakeholders from the city participate. So, as Dottie and Jerry go into conference to discuss the policy and procedure manuals, and ultimately, whatever search decision is made, I'd like for both of you to keep in mind residential feedback that I have been receiving from people who want to see a resident onboard on that hiring committee. And I think it makes sense that a stakeholder from the community should be included in any type of consideration for how you hire or who gets hired as the police chief. So, that is some...
I would like, I would like to know what the community complaints and interests are, and maybe send those to Mike, and he can give them to us, so we can begin there.
Well, I'm just...
I have not heard a peep from anyone.
I have, and I've heard from several.
I need to send in the concern, I have the person send the concern to Mike, and he can make it available to Jerry and myself.
I don't need to go through. I can go directly to you and to Jerry as you sit down and consider this as a committee. So, my point is...
I don't think it's necessary to have a community member. I think that we can decide this professionally among ourselves. That's our job.
All right. Anyhow...
All right, well, we have...
Moving on.
I just, I'd love to have a community member. Community members are always fine.
That's fine, yeah. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Jerry, I think you had the Eastern Egress from...
Yes, yes. I think we need that sign to be put up, "No left turn."
I thought we had decided on that already. Did we not decide on that already?
It needs to go up.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. You know, the other thing I was wondering is, what about, this is stupid, but putting a "No right turn" up as you approach the exit, I mean, is that going to confuse people as far as the...
Oh.
I think, I think we need to wait and see what happens. I wouldn't expect that's a common movement, but time will tell. That'll give us a good assessment of if it's an issue or not. It's hard to say right now, so I wouldn't want to go putting signs up. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
Even on the left turn?
They're talking about signage on the east end of OUP.
Jerry, he was asking about signs for people on Sunset not to turn right into their...
Yeah, no...
That's what I was addressing.
No, it's, they're both an issue. I've watched, watched people do both, and it's...
Do you have some video?
Okay. Engineers' report, Josiah.
I'll mention again here from my, my report, February 1st is the deadline for residents to sign up for the city-administered sidewalk project, so if you have a notice, February 1 is the date. I do have, Mike got me quite a few email addresses, so again, we'll follow up with those people here next week, just to make sure they're aware of the timing, since it's been a while. Also, I wanted to follow up on my note here and just note that the Sunset Street bus stop landing, which is part of your, sort of your ADA transition plan, was also in the Streets projects approved. As I noted in there, we approached Grandview Court for some feedback on consolidating a bus stop, and they, as I wrote, received that favorably and are in favor of working with the city. The city will have to work with them for some easements, because the sidewalk by Grandview's actually not in the city right-of-way there, it's well behind the right-of-way line for some reason, but they've said it's a project they're in favor for, and they'd be willing to do what's needed to make that happen. They also indicated that if the city wanted to proceed with adding a covered bus shelter at that stop, they'd be willing to contribute $500 towards that installation. So, where we're at on that is, I'm laying out the preliminary design for that. I'll send it back to them, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and that work is being put together along with the other street repair projects for this year, to be all in one package.
I just, I want to support design, because we have been working with Grandview to try to get this bus stop established. There have been many citizens that have complained about the safety of the exiting bus as is, and as long as we can put the concrete pad on the west side, this is a very positive, positive result if we can all be together.
The other item I wanted to just make mention of from my report, item five on the Melrose Visioning Project, a little unusual, I did talk with the MPO, and typically, this is the, this is the time when they send out the funding applications, the every-two-years funding applications. There's been a change in the federal transportation bill, which the result of that is the funding, there's two different funding sources that they usually put out at the same time. One has been moved up till the fall of this year, so the T-TAC Committee, which is meeting, they're going to decide whether or not they want to separate those and proceed with a funding application this February, or their other option, they may decide to hold off till next spring, a year from now, and combine them back all together and get on, get on that schedule again. So, just something to, as a heads up, and I wanted to point that out.
Just, I did have one question. On item number two, you, one of the inclusions you had was the Cozer George stormwater intake. I had sent that information, if there was some sort of a grant from, from somewhere in the state to do stormwater, are we going to be able to tap any of that money to pay for that?
Those were the FEMA funds?
I, I don't recall exactly what it was. I mentioned it earlier.
This would, this would not be a candidate for that.
Would not be.
It would not be.
Okay, okay.
And this is, yeah, it is not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I want to remind the council that the street improvements that we talked about for George Street, Sunset Street Bus Stop, all of that, and our strategy for budgeting this year was to be bonded, so we may have another bond to do, and Josiah and I are going to work through that. That would be about $200,000. Talking to Maggie Berger today, she thought this process could be done with a local bank, or local banks, rather than what we went through with the OUP project. More to come on that, but I just wanted to make sure the council was, was not, I didn't want to present it the first time at the next meeting, so anyway, Josiah and I will be working through that with, as we go through here, and also talking to Steve about how we do that. The last one we did like this was 2007, so it's been a while. That was before some of our time on council.
Jim, I'd like to be involved in it also, if I could.
In what way would you like to be involved in?
I would like to know the process as you move along and find out, you know, what the, what the costs and consequences are. I just, I'd just like to, you know, just FYI, I mean...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, okay, no problem. Josiah is going to be putting together most of his work, so we'll keep you up to date.
Okay, thank you.
Sylvia?
Yep, thank you. All right, I wanted to, first of all, just confirm that everyone was able to sign their conflicts of interest. There's a number of city, impacted city folks here present tonight. If you have not signed your form, I have extras are right here, and we can do, pick them up for conflicts of interest. I submitted mine, I know a couple of other counselors did, but I don't have confirmation that all of council has submitted their, their statement. I do want to take the time right now to thank the many folks that saw the third year of Lights in the Heights 2016 come together. It was a great weather pattern to work with. It was really windy in the early part of the morning when setup was being made, but once sunset came through, it, the wind settled, and we ended up with a gorgeous, beautiful night for many, many folks and families to go out and enjoy a stroll on the Luminary Walk. And a special thank you to the following folks that were volunteers and sponsors. For volunteers, we had the, we had Randall and Sue Atkinson, and Michael and Kendra, we had Carol Ann Christensen, we had Chuck Friedman, we had Dave and Teresa Giese, we had Lynn Ginrich, we had Mike and Lisa Havercamp, JP and Benji R. Cod, Jim and Catherine Lane, Art Novak, the Pierce family, myself, Christina Rosebrook, Kip and Sherry Sheldon, Martha and Madeline Terry, Susan Wells and Isla Zimmerman, volunteering in many different phases to make this happen. Sponsoring the program since... Sponsoring the program, since this is not a, a community event that receives city funding or community foundation grants, were the following sponsors. Karen and Chuck Friedman. The Hanson Family. JP and Sylvia Urquod. Jim and Catherine Lane. Jerry and Judy Musser. Larry and Mary Matthew Wilson. Roger and Tracy, and Tracy Jinks. So a special thank you to the volunteers and the sponsors, and of course, to the many, many, many neighbors south of Benton this year that were very positive in their comments on the luminaries. So it looks like this is growing to become a little bigger than just University Heights. So I do want to thank everyone for your effort, for your enthusiasm for this program, and for comments. Thank you.
Sylvia, I want to thank you for leading that, because I think you really did a good job on that, and I appreciate it. I would comment too, Catherine offered up, and I think she's suggested that, next year, we open up the community center and have hot chocolate and that kind of stuff at the end, so that when folks are walking, I think a good idea to think about that, so-
Absolutely.
Another advantage of having this facility here.
Right. Absolutely. Someone else mentioned a bonfire, and number of other, of other, of other very exciting ideas, so-
Their own little burning man. I can see it now.
What can I say? I, I, I can't turn down comments, right?
I attached the eGovernment report, as usual, the January, and because it's January, I gave you the year-end summary, which is more information than you ever want to know what to do with. Couple things, we have, we have gone to a new format for displaying our council meetings. Traditionally, we've had those replays. The web stream on demand is available through Earthlink, or Earth Channel, through Iowa City Cable Channel 4. Earth Channel's going away eventually. We're the first major group that Cable 4 has migrated over to YouTube, and we are the stars of YouTube on their channel, because more people watch our meetings than anything else. And I've, I've included that in there. The other thing that I think is, is interesting is that in, in general, we still have, we continue to grow in terms of community engagement with our electronic resources, whether it is watching meetings, or accessing the webpage, or whatever. It seems we're, we're getting close to leveling off, but it, it still was some growth over last year. Finally, I think with our new location here, we do have a new setup. We are operating with a new camera and recording system. I think so far tonight looks, looks like it's been a success. I'm, I'm happy with the way, I'm, it's a very simple system to run. It's a very simple system to, to access. So I, I think, I think it's a big plus. And I think that as we also look, the speakers in the room here, if you look, for those that are here in the room, if you look on the back wall, yeah, the speakers are in the ceiling, but if you look on the back wall between the janitor's closet and the window, you'll see a volume knob on the wall back there, and that's what controls the sound for this room. And that's completely independent of sound that goes out on the recording, so, and that means that anybody who uses this room could use a sound system without having to get into the office or turn anything on. It's just a matter of plugging in a microphone, and it works. So, I, I think, I think Reference Audio has designed us a nice, simple, elegant solution. I think we'll pay, we'll pay the benefits, the dividends of it for years, so. And, since I'm always near the end of the meeting, it's not nine o'clock yet, so, you know, the bar has been set for how long a meeting at the new place is going to last. I just want to put that in that-
Well, having, I just want to make one other comment. Having left Horn School, and Athletic Club, and St. Andrews, and being here, and one of the people who is not here tonight, who has done a yeoman's job over the last five years is John McClure.
Absolutely.
And I want to, he'll probably be watching this, and I want him to know how much we as a council appreciate it. And I don't know more com, you know, we get more comments about watching this on TV. Lots of residents do it. I don't know why, but they do. And it's, it's very helpful, and, and John has been the stalwart, along with Mike.
Absolutely.
But John, John started it, and it's John's equipment and everything else, and I just want to give a shout out to John, and, and thank him for all the, over the years, I don't know how many years it's been, but it's been several, and he's really done a, he did a remarkable job for this city.
We've done every meeting since 2011. We did about half of 2010. The microphones that we're still using were donated by John to the city, that, and the microphone cables. He donated quite a bit of equipment to us, so that, and that greatly reduced our expenses here in putting this system together, so, yes, he absolutely deserves our, our utmost thanks.
Are there any announcements? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.